All right, welcome everyone to the March the 4th, 2024, Sherry County Commissioners Meeting. I will now call the meeting to order, and with that, small crowd tonight, who knows? We might get out of here before late supper, Sandy. Uh, I will, uh, now, I believe it's me, I'll lead in invocation and pledge, please stand. Most kindly gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon each and every one of us. We thank you for all the goodness and mercy that's been shown upon us. We ask that you be with all those folks that hurt and suffering throughout our local geographic county here, across our state, the United States, and across the world. Lord, may we seek and find hope and trust and rest in you, and be with all those in so many unfortunate circumstances. And those of us that aren't, Lord, help us to always be grateful for them, for the, for the privileges that you grant us each and every day. Watchovers, lead, guide, direct us and protect us, help all we do in this meeting, be to your honor and to your glory. For it's in Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, you've all had a chance to look at the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda for March the 4th. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Bill Goins, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Larry Johnson, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the agenda has been approved. Also, looking in your packet, uh, you have the meeting minutes of February the 19th, 2024. I'm sure you've had a chance to read through them, and I am looking for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve the minutes of February the 19th, 2024 by Commissioner Mark Marion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bill Goins, any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, and the meeting minutes of February the 19th have been approved. We have a very thin consent agenda here tonight. Uh, it's in your packet, and for public consumption, County Manager Chris Knopf, I will ask you to go over what is in the consent agenda tonight, and you tell me you have a couple of add-ons, and if you'll do that, I'd appreciate you, uh, telling us what's in there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only item that was in your packet was a Health and Nutrition Center request for write-offs. Items they will not be able to collect, this was approved by the Board of Health at a recent meeting. And there are two items for you to consider, you have these at your, each of your seats, uh, for addition. Uh, of course, you'll need to amend the consent agenda if you would like, and then to vote on all three items, secondly. The first item is a request from the county attorney, this is a deed for just over 20 acres in Elkin Corporate Park. This was given to the county as a part of the incentive agreement for Pittsburgh Glassworks in 2011. It was to be available should PGW need to expand, that has not occurred. And so we are at the point in time where the, the property needs to revert back to the town of Elkin, as predetermined. So the board will just need to approve this special warranty deed, so that we can get that executed tomorrow. The other item is a request, uh, from the Health and Nutrition Center as well as Finance. First item is Health wants to utilize two, um, state funds to purchase refrigeration equipment for vaccines. The other is a portable vaccine refrigerator, both of these are utilizing state funds, there are no county funds involved. And the second item for Finance is Budget Amendment Number Eight to cover these two expenses. And that's the consent agenda with the two additional items, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, will we, will you be more comfortable with a motion to amend tonight's consent agenda and add all three, and then we'll get a motion for the consent? Okay, gentlemen, I'm looking for a motion to amend tonight's consent agenda from one item to the other two, which is a total of three that Manager Knopf has just laid out, I'm looking for a motion to amend the agenda.
Will she turn me in, Mr. Chairman?
Motion from Commissioner Larry Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bill Goins, any discussion? There being none, all in favor of amending tonight's consent agenda, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, and the consent, the amend, the amendment to tonight's agenda has been approved. Now, I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda with the three items, do I hear a motion?
I moved.
Motion for Commissioner Eddie Harris, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Mark Marion, any discussion? Any comment? None, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen, and tonight's consent agenda has been approved. Okay, with that said, uh, we do have some folks here, I hope you're all, uh, welcome, hap- happy to have all of you. And tonight's, uh, I believe it's, it's time for our open forum, if we have any takers, now's the time. If you've got something on your mind, feel free to come down, make a few comments, and, uh, we'll entertain them now. Anybody for open forum, please feel free to come and address the podium. Okay, looks like we have no takers tonight, that's always a good thing, or sometimes it is. But anyway, we'll get out here maybe with our, with our hides, but, uh, I will now close tonight's portion for open forum, and with that said, next on the agenda is, uh, and I'd like to welcome you is Michelle Huff, with, who is our Sherry County Elections Director. And I would also like to welcome, I believe your, uh, board members are here, Chair Mr. Dwayne Carter, and Clark Comer, and Barbara Cave, and Jimmy Yocley, thank you for coming, you're all welcome.
Drew.
Oh, and true point, I didn't see you sitting behind Jimmy. Hey Drew, uh, sorry about that, uh, go right ahead, Michelle, Michelle, and take it from here.
Sure, thank you so much, uh, Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to, to be here tonight, and to express our need, and I want to thank Administration, of course, for, for getting us on the agenda. Um, we're here tonight to ask for an Elections Clerk position. Many changes, I know you all are aware of the many changes that has occurred in election law in a very quick span of time, uh, since October of 2023. Um, many changes due to Senate Bill 747 and 749 have created, uh, a lot of new processes that we go through for a lot of activities that deal with voting and list maintenance, and those types of things, that is so important to get us to Election Day. Um, I'll start out with, I know, I think you all have in the packet, the memo, I'll hit on just a few highlights of that memo. Uh, but our current voter registration is right at 3,500, um, additional people since, uh, 2020. And, uh, I think we had right around 98 new voters, uh, register at early voting. So with each, uh, process, of course, uh, we're adding on more each day. So we're definitely serving more of the voting public, which that's what we're here for, we're very happy to see those numbers increase. Um, I think the number one item that is a, a big change is, uh, voter photo ID was reinstated in April of 2023. We're currently in our first election, um, with voter photo ID. And I will say, for early voting, we had a very smooth process with that. Uh, from our experience, working the polls with the poll workers each night, we would speak to them, and very little, um, issues or problems because of photo ID with people presenting it. Most were very eager to do so. Um, while I don't want to make that a political item, uh, with voter photo ID, because I know sometimes it can be, from staff perspective and process perspective, um, for a absentee by mail ballot, for example, it creates four additional steps in handling that absentee ballot because of photo ID. Again, not a political statement, just the process. Um, so that alone, if it's, um, a complete ballot, a sufficient ballot, it's four extra steps. If it is not, it requires two to three extra steps beyond that. Um, so for each of those items, of course, it, it does take more time. We do anticipate, uh, an, an uptick in provisional voting because of photo ID. Uh, we did have eight provisional ballots cast during the early voting process, or during the early voting period, um, this election, in the 15 days, we typically have two for early voting.
And just for the rec, just kind of for the public?
Sure.
What does that, what would that entail, provisional?
Provisional, sure, I'm, I'm glad you asked that, because a lot of the public does not know. Um, a provisional ballot is cast when that's sort of a last resort, we cannot turn anyone away. So if someone is there to vote at an early voting site from Yadkin County, and they're determined they want to vote where they are in that moment, if that's a Sherry County precinct, then we explain to them, there's no ballot, no one on a ballot that's going to pertain to where they live, but if they pursue it, they just want to vote for president, let's say, we offer provisional ballot. Um, provisional ballots are kept locked, um, in our safe. Um, they are, remain sealed until we do the provisional research, which begins the day after the election, and the night before canvas, the ninth day after Election Day, that's when our board will review each provisional ballot. Our board determines if those would count or not, according to the law and the numbered memos. So each and every provisional ballot is looked at by the board and considered for approval or disapproval.
And you're doing voter ID, you're doing voter IDs, that's, how many, how many voter IDs have you issued, do you know?
Um, free voter IDs in our office, oh, Sidney, I'm going to guess, what, between 75? Seventy, seventy-five and a hundred, yeah. Mm-hmm. Um, we feel like that will increase as, you know, the general comes along, um, but yeah, between 75 and 100 for this process. Um, and with a provisional ballot also, uh, Mr. Goins, the, uh, the voter is given an information sheet when they cast that provisional ballot, with a PIN number that they can call and check up on that ballot to see if it is counted or not. And many, many times, we do get those follow-up calls. So at that time, we explain, um, what research we did and, and what the board decided. Uh-huh.
Now, expanding on what he mentioned there, you have done something called a voter ID drive.
Mm-hmm.
What, explain that to me, what, what is that, I, I'm not sure what that is.
Um, yes, we went to, I believe, four locations altogether as a drive. Yeah, and we actually do, we went to Reeves Community Center twice, because we did have such a big turnout there. Uh, but we did go into a couple of facilities who expressed the need for photo ID for residents who, they did not have a license for, the family did not have a, a way of, uh, photo identification for the residents. Uh, we went to Reeves, we went to Armfield, we went to Elkin Rec Center, um, just to have a drive for anyone who felt like they did not have the proper acceptable photo ID to print the free ones for them. Um, if they needed to register at the same time, we did not produce that photo ID for them, they would have to register, it would have to validate, then we could mail them the card.
And are you charged by the state of North Carolina to hold voter ID drives?
Um, we, we were, um, asked, each county was asked to do a extensive, um, information to the public just specifically for photo ID, once it did become acceptable in April. Now, for us, we did not push it until we got closer into our election time as to not confuse people, because we did not have a municipal election in the fall, like many other counties. So it's not in general statute to, to provide that, no, but it was encouraged because it was new.
Okay.
And our board did know about every one of those, uh, instances ahead of time.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, yes, you're welcome. Um, and then in December 14th, 2023, North Carolina State Board of Elections voted to require newly registered voters to include the last four of their social or their driver's license number. Um, no longer could that be, um, ignored or not filled in on the voter application form. And with this, again, if that's not provided, then it's, um, a two-step process to contact that voter, and, um, you know, if they do not get the verification process completed, then they're not registered to vote. So that is another, another step, again, although we think that's fantastic, it makes it better for our staff to be able to communicate and find that person, and easier to validate either their, their social or their driver's license number. But again, it just creates, it, it does create more work on, on staff. And, um, I would like to see, I know you see this in your memo, I think a big need, a big want, but also a big need, is voter education. As much as we try on our website, um, and as, as many things as Sidney puts out on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, um, there's a big market we're not able to hit, we're not able to educate. So some type of Citizens Academy, I think, would be so needed, so well attended, I hope. You could have the first one and see, but I do think that the, uh, general public needs information. Civics class was a long time ago. A lot of people do not understand, um, our processes, they do not understand how voting occurs and why the laws are the way they are. So any opportunity to be able to make that a positive for the community, I think it just instills trust in our department even more, and in the process, I trust something I understand. I think people often do not trust what they don't understand. So this person would, of course, be very instrumental in that, uh, Citizens Academy. Same-day registration has also, uh, according to, uh, Senate Bill 747, it has changed the process. So every night when early voting closed, we would have to process all those same-day registrations immediately, because that starts the clock ticking the next day for their cards to either be returned or not. If that card happens to be returned to us undeliverable, then that ballot would have to be pulled from the early voting machines by our board, challenged and pulled, and, uh, manual edit would have to be done on the day of canvas. Those things have not been in the law before. Um, early voting challenges, we believe, uh, will increase in number, um, due to the passing of Senate Bill 747. Um, any voter in the county can now challenge any other voter. And years prior to now, um, you had to live in the same precinct as the early voting voter in order to challenge them. Now, any voter can, can make a challenge. Um, already now, we have two challenges that we, our board will hear on the morning of canvas. Um, and this is before Election Day, so we, we do already have two of those ahead of us. Um, precinct observers, I know the county manager and I have talked a lot, about this a lot. Um, observers now that are appointed by the political party have much more leeway, um, as to where they may go inside the polling place. Um, the law actually states that they can move about, that's the language. So it, uh, also, the language, uh, indicates that the observer can speak to any poll worker, not the chief judge only. And every year up to now, it has been only the chief judge. So, um, we do anticipate, uh, probably, uh, voters are not going to be very receptive to someone being that close to them while they're voting their ballot, but it is allowed, according to the law, as long as they're not intimidating that voter. So, uh, we feel like there's going to be some potential, um, you know, instances with that. And again, education in that would be phenomenal, if we could get more education to the public. Uh, possibly, Senate Bill 749 is going to change the makeup of our board. Uh, we're going to go from potentially a five-member board to a four-member board. Four-member boards, when you have a, a two Democrat, two Republican, many times, sometimes, they're not going to agree. And if it's a four-member board not being able to agree, I think you all know who makes that decision, the General Assembly. And we're going to be deadlocked, I think, nation, uh, statewide because of this, but that's going to do a lot to staff when so many items are left open. And the General Assembly's not going to be in session all the time, so that one, the jury's still out on how that's going to work. Uh, we did find out today, um, that the three-judge panel possibly will rule on that this Friday, the 9th. So we're anxiously awaiting that decision. Uh, beginning July 1st, anyone selected for jury duty, uh, the clerk of court will be responsible for letting our office know if they are not a US citizen. If they can't be chosen for jury, jury duty, then the clerk of court must let us know, so then, um, we can remove that person from the voter rolls. That's the first time that has occurred as well. That is with the new law that passed and, uh, was effective, uh, with this new, uh, session, but it's, they, they actually pushed it out to July 1st, so that will be in effect for the general. And then just a couple more items, in 2020, um, I know this board knows, we had two additional part-time staff members um, because of a grant, two grants that we had, um, we won't go down that road, we won't talk about that, but just being honest, I think you all know, also with Senate Bill 747, that is no longer, um, no one is no longer eligible to apply for grants in the state of North Carolina to help administer an election. Um, so that's very real, I think we, we know how this board stood on that. I respect this board's decision on that, but the truth is the truth, we don't have any funds that we can apply for, um, to help alleviate any of these, uh, personnel, um, you know, all the items I have mentioned, we just don't have the people to fulfill all, all of those processes that we do.
As Director of the County Board of Elections, you feel like that was a pretty good move on behalf of the General Assembly to outline, to, uh, prohibit outside monies from outside the county in regards to grants and funding?
I understand when it comes to personnel, yes, sir. Um, I think the only thing, we are in dire need of additional laptops to replace some laptops from the early 2000s, which makes the check-in process slower. I think that kind of equipment, having a grant for that, to me, would only make good sense. Personnel, I understand. Um, but I'm going to be honest with, I do think we should be allowed to apply for a grant to supplies with laptops, um, handheld scanners to scan the back of driver's license, those kind of things. And that was, uh, up until 2019, that had occurred every year through HAVA grants, but.
Through what?
HAVA Grants, Help America Vote Act.
Help America Vote Act.
Uh-huh, yes, sir, and, and now that cannot be applied for.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, and then finally, I will just say, uh, we do work for about eight weeks straight, 12 to 16-hour days. It, it does take all of us in the office to, to make it happen. In no way am I bellyaching, that's just, uh, just part of the job that comes with it. Uh, but it is the hard truth that, that burnout and fatigue can happen, um, in the office. Um, so any other person that could help alleviate some of that, to keep us all as fresh as possible, uh, would, would be a welcome, um, improvement as, as well. And then I just, uh, do want to end by saying, first of all, we appreciate everything this board has allowed us to purchase and improve on in the way of security this year, we've had a lot of improvements. Um, I know our board, um, was very grateful for what this board did in the way of, um, safety with the bollards, the panic buttons, the doors. Um, the safe has been phenomenal for, it's really served the purpose well. So, um, we understand you all have tough decisions to make, there's a lot of requests and not a big pot of money, and we understand that, but, uh, we are asking that you do consider, um, these concerns that we have, uh, with, with the increase in processes. And, and we would, of course, like that sooner rather than later, if at all possible, uh, because absentee by mail for the general begins September 6th. That will be here before we can blink, so.
Uh, what's the posture, the stand of your local Board of Election? Were they in unanimity on this request? Does everybody here believe that that should happen?
We do, sir. Due to unfunded state mandates that have placed more duties on the staff, it, it's, and also, one other item, County Manager and I have discussed, and that is the use, uh, the use of.
Come on up, Dwayne, come on up. Microphone land out there, they'll, they'll enjoy hearing you.
Good evening. Unfunded state mandates, I know you all hate to see them handed down. We do too, but those mandates have to be carried out by our department. And so the duties that the two-state, uh, passages of law that they put in last year has put a strain, has put more duties on the staff. It's put more on the board. But one of the things, as I was starting to say, uh, that I've discussed with the County Manager and, and the Assistant County Manager, is part-time personnel that are limited in their 12 months, how many hours that they can work. If we use those prior to and during a primary, chances are they will get to the maximum amount of their hours and cannot work in the general election. A lot of the duties that, that Michelle has alluded to tonight is not just for election year, but there are added duties that have to be carried out. Some of them, as we receive items in daily, monthly, uh, there was one report that Sidney used to do once a month. Now?
Felling reported.
How many times?
Now weekly.
Now it's weekly, so that's where she had one duty that occurred, she could do that on her calendar once a month. Now it's every week, so that's state law. And we're obliged to carry that out. As I say, the board was unanimous in the request, we see the need that, that staff needs to be increased in the office.
Mr. Carter? Go ahead, Bill.
So are, are we good to, to do this in the budget, in a new budget year? Or, or is that something you need right now?
We needed it in December. I, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm answering you best can, I'm not trying to be blunt.
No, no, we, we need to know that.
It's needed as soon as it can be.
Mr. Carter, uh, what, uh, you've been over there, uh, uh, about as long as Sandy Snow's been here to county, but, uh, and, and, and I mean that as a, I mean that as a compliment, uh, that's a, that's a warm, gracious compliment, I hope you accept it as such.
Thank you, that is, that is.
What, historically, how, how many people have y'all had over there? I mean, or how many do you have now, and is that how many you've always had, not taking into account the part-time during the elections and all that stuff?
How many full-time and part-time do you have now?
We have five full-time at Woody Mustang.
And, and how many, for how long have you always, is, is it gone back many, many years on that?
I would say, I would say it's been back for three years, that would be my best estimate.
Yeah.
Uh, County Manager, you might have served.
He had a position last five years.
I, I put that here for you, yeah, he did have one.
And how many full, and how many part-time do you have now?
Well, part-time is tough, because actually our, um, early voting staff are considered part-time, but they're not in the office. They're the only in the office part-time, uh, we have one.
Would this person be in the office most of the time, or would they be doing mostly outside work?
The no physician, potentially, yes.
Yeah, the position you're asking for?
I would like to see a 70/30, with 30% being out, out in the community.
I'm sorry, yeah, 70/30, with 30% of this person again being in the community. Not by themselves necessarily, but creating areas that they could share the word, so to speak, or share the law, whether that be booths at a festival, the library, all the libraries within our county. We would love to see some education with seniors in the high schools. Again, we do a lot of recruiting with our student election officials that have been very successful for us too. So we feel like if we have some kind of presence in that high school ahead of their senior year, then we could get a better turnout for student election officials to help us on election day. They're very quick on the laptops, and our veteran poll workers sure enjoy seeing those younger people come in and do that.
Gentlemen, more questions, comments?
And you think that there wouldn't be any? I guess my question is this, there is enough work, and you've said that, I'm reiterating a point, I guess. For this person, full-time? And, you know, as a county commissioner, I have to make sure that we don't have people sitting around this county, you know, playing with their phone and doing their fingernails and, you know, calling Uncle Joe and Aunt Suzie and all that. You know, this is real serious business with the taxpayers' money. And I'm just going to go ahead and say it here, and, you know, these guys can do what they want to. It seems to me that this looks legitimate on its face to me. And it's quite probable that Eddie Harris would support this. I made a vote last week at the retreat to not fund us some positions mid-year because we have a county budget, and to me, that's very serious. I won't support this, you know, in a mid-year like this. You know, for me, it would have to be in the context of developing a new county budget and start on July 1st. That's kind of a principled matter for me. But nevertheless, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, any other comments, questions? I'll just say that, you know, I probably need some voter education myself. I'm kind of old-fashioned. I feel like when you get old enough to vote, you ought to kind of be up to speed enough on the current events that you go and you seek out a place to vote. And if you don't, you try to seek out someone that does know how. And I'll, you know, again, I'm not second-guessing you here on your outside-of-office work. But if we provide a full-time position, you know, I'd much rather see that full-time position on campus for the most part, instead of out here. You know, and I believe that your purpose is true and good, and the board's purpose is true and good. But to have a person out here, you know, whatever they're doing in a nursing home or in a library or a high school, you know, you and I'd probably have to sit down, you'd have to educate me more on why that would be a taxpayer-funded position, full-time. So I'm not, I'm not saying that that's a wrong approach. I'm just saying that, you know, it's an interesting one to me. I'd have to have more information. I don't have a problem with, I don't want people overworked. And you, everybody knows elections have become more complicated, not less complicated, depending on which side of the fence you may veer on. For various reasons, it's a complicated world.
Yeah.
It's not simple anymore. I think the only thing that I would say to this is, it would be my hope that if this board saw fit to grant you a position, we'd grant you a position that would basically be like most employers. We've got some that travel. We've got different folks that venture out. But, you know, for the most part, if you're overwhelmed and overworked in your office, I'd like to see, for the most part, that person be somebody that could be in that office for the most of the time and help overcome that issue that when somebody was out sick or when you had all of these new laws to comply by and the mandates that has been passed down, that most of, a lot of which I like. Just a matter of personal preference there, but for whatever reason, we have them. But I would hope this position would be in the office. And I too was in that issue the other day at the retreat concerning adding positions during the interim of the year outside of budget cycle.
Yes, sir.
I realize that there comes issues before and after the time that coincides with an annual budget. But as a board whose responsibility and charge is to see over the entire budget, bumping up close to $100 million with probably a lot more millions on top of that that's asked for, and we've got to get down to a few less million than will be asked for. You know, one of the ways that we control that is from budget to budget. We kind of assess what we've got, and then we figure out what we can spend. That's how we formulate a budget. And a lot of times after that budget is passed, you know, we hear about a chiller that's broken, but it was 38 years old. Well, two weeks ago, when the budget was passed, it was 37 and 50 weeks old. And so my question is, well, why didn't you incorporate that into your budget? Not asking you that question. You've got an election coming up tomorrow, primary election. You've already had some early voting. I'm going to concur with Commissioner Harris on this one in short, just to let the board know where I'm at. I can be persuaded to figure out that you're going to use this person in your board to the best of your ability. And I would love to suggest that you use them inside for the most part. I'm not sure that I understand all this voter education and interaction with voters outside of elections. But again, you and I can have a conversation about that later. What I will do is support it if we can incorporate it into the next budget cycle. Gentlemen?
Well, I'd just like to say that I know your time since I've been on the board hasn't been too easy. So I appreciate the job that y'all do. I know it's not always pleasant, especially when you deal with me, and I don't know what I'm doing on finances. So, but the... You said you had two part-time now. One, will they be able to work during the regular election? Or will they already have their hours?
Well, that's, we'll have to, I'll have to get with Sandy on that, but it's going to cut it short that it has before. But, you know, it's hard to determine right now. But she's got a lot of hours in for this election. From the end of November, right before filing began, of course, through where we are now. We will probably have to not utilize her through the canvas period just in order to, again, keep those hours as close as we can to keep that under the 1,000.
That puts her limit on somebody else.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, you perform a job that's one of our constitutional rights, and I'm very serious about that. And I appreciate what you do, and I'm for this new addition.
Gentlemen, any more comments, questions?
Well, my comment is that I appreciate the full board being here tonight, and also appreciate their unanimous in this decision, this need, this request. I'm, no doubt, I'm for it. And Mr. Chairman, I'm ready now. They present, they present tonight, hoping, but I'm ready to make my call tonight if it comes about.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Goins, you got anything to add?
I've been asked to support the position.
I can, but with some terms. And again, it looks, even when we're in a losing side of things, I still feel like, you know, there's room for a couple opinions. This is a fiscal matter for me. You know, we have about 20 departments, depending on who you ask and when, 21, Sandy, 22, maybe sometime, 23. Okay, that's 23 now. And just as a rule of thumb, if every department asks for extra personnel during, before, and after the last-passed budget, it would throw our budget into a tailspin. We operate a tight budget here, and we're limited to spending, for the most part, what the taxpayers give us out of their pockets to make the wheels go around. And, you know, it's a lot easier to say yes, and we love it, and everything's lovely, and have you Santa hat on every night. But sometimes it's about fiscal responsibility. I appreciate what the board does. I appreciate you coming tonight. Appreciate your sentiments on this, and you too, Michelle. Nothing personal here, but I think you know my position. So gentlemen, I'm entertaining the motion for action. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion for the new position.
Okay, a motion to grant the new position, starting effective when, Mr. Marion?
Well, while I'm making this motion, I would like to say that, you know, it's kind of like what Commissioner Harris said earlier that he voted no on some additional employees at the retreat. You know, it occurred during middle of the year. What they were, nobody knew what was going to happen. And we found out in December what they needed. So elections don't happen in July. They don't happen July 1st. They happen in March and November.
And maybe May.
May, sometimes May, and warmer in May.
Yeah, it is warmer in May.
But...
And we knew they were going to happen when we pass the budget, but continue. All right. So I have a motion from Commissioner Marion.
So many, so many state changes. I reckon, my motion is to put the position in immediately.
Okay, Commissioner Marion makes a motion to put the position in effective immediately. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Johnson. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go right ahead.
We're only talking, you got to hire somebody. We're saying April, May, and June. Would that be a correct statement? Because from what I gather, all five of us is in agreement. You know, it sounds like we would support it. It'd be unanimous support, but we're talking three months. Is that a correct statement? What kind of monies you talking about for three months for a full-time employee? The position of a...
$24,000 would be about $6,000. I don't know what the pay scale is.
I understand that too. So I'm just saying that the very best will be three months. So we're talking three months, $10,000.
April.
Eight or $9,000 according to our manager. That was my thought. I'm willing, you have a need, and that's the reason you're here tonight, and that's the reason I'm going to...
All right.
Not too bad, but I know it's the principle and such as that, but I feel the need is current, and that's the reason I second the motion.
Yes, sir. You may go right ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you folks for your service. I think you have a very difficult job and a thankless job. And thank you for your service, Mr. Carter, particularly your longevity over there and leadership. And you too, Clark, y'all have done an outstanding job. I will go back to Commissioner Tucker's question or concern earlier about the 30% outside of the office in an educational capacity. I think one has to be really, really careful in that, from a Board of Elections perspective. Because in the highly-charged climate in which we live today, that you're very well aware of, you know, it is extremely important that every avenue of caution is used to appear non-political and nonpartisan and fair. And people have to have confidence in the person that is doing this and their motives, and ensuring the public that there are no ulterior motives in this. So I will just make that note as well. Thank you.
I've discussed that as well. Perception is, there's a lot of eyes on you folks. And when you go into nursing homes and libraries and high schools, and some of that very well may be what we need to do. But there are always naysayers that says, I wonder what in the world the Surrey County Board of Election folks are over there in the nursing home for today? I wonder why the Surrey County Board of Election folks are over at the library today? So again, our opinion on that, or at least mine as well. Okay, gentlemen, I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Mark Marion. I have a second from Commissioner Larry Johnson. If anybody's, if everybody is through with discussion, I'm going to call it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, three ayes. Any opposed? Say no. No.
Nay.
Three to two. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for your time. Oh, website, okay. Sidney, I'm going to get you up for website.
I want to say something just real quick. I do appreciate, I do watch your meetings every once in a while. I do appreciate the fact that you stream your meetings and wish that other folks would do the same. We do have some organizations that don't stream meetings, and that would be awfully nice if they did, all the way down, probably to our political parties. It would be nice if they streamed their meetings and then we knew what was going on. But I do appreciate you streaming them. I think it offers that layer of transparency. I appreciate the professionalism and collegiality that you show to each other, even though we're of differing political opinions. You do a great job, and I appreciate, appreciate what you do. Michelle, I appreciate all that you and your staff do and all the poll workers. Lot of work, you know, you and I have talked about that, and we talked about this fall, if we go to four sites, what are you going to do in terms of getting people to cover those four sites? But I hope and pray that some of y'all have a little sense, and we just go to maybe a week, a week of early voting at some point, because it's too dang long when you have to stand out there and do this. And I'm burnt. But I do, I do appreciate everyone involved in the election process and appreciate all of you.
We appreciate that very much, and we appreciate your time, for sure. I'll get Sidney to come up and talk about the website.
Yeah.
To have our own.
All right. We are requesting to have our own website right now. It's linked through the county. We have a link to it, that's surreycountyncvotes.gov. And we had requested that that happened because the CO.surrey is kind of long and hard for voters to remember. And then also just the trust aspect, the .gov. Whenever we were at our last state conference, they were really touching on that, that that is, really helps the security of the website, and then also the trust aspect. Our social media sites were verified on. And once again, a layer of trust for the voters because there is a lot of misinformation out there. And so we had talked to Martha, MIS Director, about trying to get that .gov website. And she said that that wasn't possible to have that as our username handle, whatever you want to call that URL, other than getting our separate site. So my understanding would be, it would still be linked through the Surrey County website, but then just redirect you to that surreycountyncvotes.gov. And so I think you have in your packet the request for that.
That comes out of y'all's budget?
Yes. And then you see the initial fee of $4,500, and then the maintenance fee of $22.75 each year. And then after that fifth year, you'd have a free refresh that Martha, again, worked out with the company that she uses.
And again, not picking on you just because I don't know. What will this accomplish that your current website will not, as far as safety, as far as ability for somebody to breach it, or as far as your comfortability? Tell me again what this will do that you don't...
The main thing, the main thing would be the voter trust with that .gov. And then also with the surreycountyncvotes.gov, we'll also be able to put that on our flyers or, you know, anything we put out that we can say, when voters call, here's where you go. Right now, the easiest way to find our website is just Googling Surrey County, North Carolina, or Surrey County Board of Elections. But sometimes that might take you to Surrey County, Virginia, that sort of thing. So if we have a direct URL that we can say, this is exactly where you need to go, you know, you don't have to search around on Google, that sort of thing. And then the .gov just has that built-in layer of security as well.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions, concerns, comments?
Most counties that you're aware of have this, or would we be an anomaly in our region, or most of them haven't? Most counties that you're aware of have, have this or, or we, would we be an anomaly in our region or most of them have it?
Most do have the dot gov. There's some that still don't, but the, the state is definitely recommending and emergency management definitely is recommending that.
Right. Okay.
I'd be interested to, I see Martha Rental sitting back there. Martha, would you, would you comment on that just for this board's education? Would you, could you mind coming on up? What will this site provide? Thank you, Ms. Martha Rental. What would this site provide in your eyes, from your IT point of view, that is not able to be provided now by our Surrey County website?
It is the dot gov. Several years ago, we got the surreycountyncvotes.gov site. And I believe, Eddie, you were chairman at the time. That's the one that you, and we actually got another one too. That's the site that they have to prove, before you can get that domain name, you have to prove that you are a county, a government entity. They require the chairman of the board to speak to them before they allow us to get the site. There's a lot of stronger restraints on getting a dot gov account than a dot com or dot US or dot net or whatever, you know, all the different orgs, different domains.
It has a much more trust factor with the public. They know when they go to dot gov that it's something serious.
Yes. And with the security, like Homeland Security and everything watches the dot gov sites closer than they do all the other sites. So if there's somebody trying to infiltrate them, you know, change votes or whatever.
Well, you know, the world is full of lunatics and hackers and crazy people. I mean, now that's trying to do everything, really. I mean, we have to constantly stay on guard here all the time. I mean, you know, we get spam, get all them things in our emails all the time, but.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right. Yeah, I, again, just points of clarification. I would, I'd like to not only hear it from you, this board of elections director, but also from our IT person. There is something to be said about, a lot to be said about voter integrity and the trust and fair, free elections and the accuracy of elections. And like, like I said a little earlier, the world has changed. If, if that can provide that, you've got the money in your budget to pay for it. I don't believe that'll be a stretch too far for me. Gentlemen, I'm looking for action. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we allow the board of elections to go with the dot gov designation on their website.
And Mr. Goins, where would that money come from?
It was out of their budget.
Already in your existing budget? Okay.
All right, gentlemen, I have a motion for Commissioner Bill Goins to approve the request for the dot gov website. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? It carries unanimously and thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And thank you for what you do. Thank you, board, for what you do. We appreciate you. Appreciate your service.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I have one additional question. When you go out to register voters, like if you're at a voter ID fair or whatever, I have a big concern about illegal aliens voting. And as we know, well know that we have a, an apocalypse on our southern border now. I mean, eight, six, eight, nine million people have come in in the last few years. Do you, what kind, how do you all know if someone is a United States citizen? If you're out there at a voter drive over here at Mount Airy somewhere, at the public library? How do you do that?
The first question on the voter registration form in North Carolina is, are you a US citizen? If they check that box and sign the bottom of the voter registration application, then they are attesting that they have told the truth. And if it is found through, you know, North Carolina State Board of Elections, through the investigation team, that that is not true, then they can be charged with a misdemeanor.
With a misdemeanor?
Or possibly a felony according to, they have voted or, yeah, it, it's just up to the investigations team. But that is the first question on every voter registration application.
Do you all know of anyone that's ever been charged under that statute in Surrey County? Yes, there have?
Yes, sir.
A few, multiple.
Two.
Okay. All right.
And that was actually right before I came, but it concluded when I was here in 2020.
Well, you know, I mean, there's some states now registering illegal aliens. And I use the term illegal alien because they're certainly not newcomers. They are, and that's the term used under federal statute law is alien. You know, they, there's some states that are, there are registering illegal aliens to vote. And I don't really understand that. But maybe it'll be adjudicated in the courts. I don't know. But I just wanted to make sure that Surrey County, that as a county commissioner, I sit here tonight and my board of elections director is up here. I want to make it known and clear that that is a very real concern for me and I think millions of Americans, quite frankly. Thank you.
And, and with the passing of the December fourteenth, twenty twenty three, with state board now requiring the last four of social or driver's license number, that is just another fail safe and to quote unquote, catch someone. They must put either of those down or check the box that they do not have one. So again, that's another layer that is, is a new improvement to helping that process.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, board. Thank you. Thanks, Sidney. All right. Moving right along, it looks like we're about to run out of items tonight. I believe somebody must have planned this. Chris, we got anything else except general county business?
That's all we have. We do not have a request for closed session.
Okay, that's no argument here. I'll start with you, Commissioner Marion. Commissioner comments? General comments?
Just one, mentioned it a while ago, exercising your constitutional right, get out and vote tomorrow. Do you do diligence and vote your conscience, vote, vote your heart? So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goins?
Have anything tonight?
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Comment?
Commissioner Harris?
Just glad to be here, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm glad to be here too. Glad y'all all are here. And I have very safe travels home and we appreciate all of you. Always good to have folks participate in county government. Thank you. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Marion's motion, second.